The special city council meeting workshop is called to order. Number two, public comments. Do you have any comments? We have none. Number three, fiscal year 2013 audit report.
There's objections. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Cromer. I'm a CPA and one of the partners with our regional associates. And we've done your 2013 audit for the 9/30 year end. And I did not work on your audit this year. I've been here in the past and worked on it, but some other folks came up here. And they're on vacation or scattered amongst the state, I think. So you get me back for a second here. But you should have three reports in front of you. And one of them, just to start off, I guess with a particular order, one of them, we call it a communication letter. And it's required that we give it to the governing body. And it should just be a little staple document, a couple pages long. And there's eight or nine bullet points in there that as auditors, we're required to go over with this body, really whether or not there's anything to say on those bullet points. And it kind of makes sense when you read the bullet points. Well, that might be kind of interesting if we had something to say. But in your case, we don't have anything to say. So you just get the bullet points. So really, there's nothing unusual or different or unusual going on there. So that's that document. The other document you will have is it's a smaller bound. Yours will be bound, but it's a smaller copy. It's called single audit reports. And if you've spent over $500,000 of federal award money in any year, then you're required to have this. And so some years, you get this, some years you don't because you always just sometimes become on that threshold of whether you're spending over $500,000 or not. And really, the main grant you got was another airport grant. And so that's what pushed you over $500,000. So there's basically, there's really two reports in here. And we package it together. But one deals with your federal grants. And if we had any issues with those grants, any kind of findings, question calls, any kind of negative thing with those federal grants, we'd do it in this document. And there's nothing in here related to your federal grants. So there's a report in there. And it just says, we didn't find anything. So we can't say anything positive. But that's required language. And that's what the federal government expects to see. There's another report in here.
What if we lost it?
If what? Yeah, if you lost your emails? Yeah, I don't know. There's a second report in here that you get every year, whether or not you spend over $500,000 or not. The state requires it. It's a common report. And it's the first one in here. And it actually, it's not related just to the federal grants, but it talks to the city as a whole. And it's divided into two pieces. One is internal control. If there's any kind of issues with the city's internal control, that would be in that report. The other one deals with compliance. And it wouldn't be just compliance with your federal grants, although that would certainly be something. It would also just be compliance with the state of Oklahoma laws, which is laws of the land, any type of significant compliance that the city has. And you didn't comply with it, those findings would be in that same report. And there's one comment in here. And we had it last year. And Kim, I don't know if you're prepared to talk about it. And I don't mean to put you on the hot seat. But it's the utility accounts receivable. And I don't know if to make this simple, but basically, you've got a control number. As things get added to it, the number goes up. As people pay, the number goes down. And it's just, you're just posting to it. And large blocks, the numbers get posted. And then off on a separate system or schedule, well, actually, you need the detail. So we have a million dollars of accounts receivable on this control. Well, who owes you the million dollars? We have this other schedule that lists, well, Joe's low with me $50. And, you know, all these people add up to the million dollars. And those two numbers need to be reconciled. And hopefully, they just, you know, stay in balance. But it's not in a color form to get out of balance. You can make an entry to one, and I'll make an entry to the other, or, you know, whatever. But for whatever reason, those numbers were out of balance, or they balanced, but kind of for the wrong reason, and they shouldn't have balanced. So, I don't know. Kim, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't. We just keep a monthly log of the number that's not in balance. It varies from month to month by, I don't know, $200 or $300. It just bounces back and forth.
Yeah, now, and last year, it was, and I don't remember the balance. It was a, there was something that happened that was unusual. And that's what started it. And then, yeah, if it's off $200 or $300, that's really not enough to maybe get us excited. But again, it's kind of like reconciling your bank. It may just be off a few dollars, but you still want to keep it in balance. And so it's good that it's not off a lot. But it's still good to either just correct it if it's small, or go and figure out what it is, you know, and fix it that way. So again, I don't mean to make a mountain of a bullet hill on that. But it is something to keep an eye on. But that's really the only thing in here. And then also in here are the comments from the prior audit. Those will say, here's what the findings we had in 2012. Here's what happened to them in 2013. And a couple of those went away. So those got resolved. It's just the accounts receivable one is the only one that still got left over.
So we're closing the books on, what, like every 60 days after? Or is it taking 60 days to post the AR to the AP? Is it, I mean, to true it up? Or is it happening every 30 days? Are we truing up, trying to true up every 30 days?
Yeah.
Well, you can't do it every 30 days because you're
Well, because we're a little bit behind.
End of the next month.
Yeah, because we're a little bit behind. So
Okay. So we're technically, you're looking at two months back as you're trying to true it up. I mean, I'm just curious. So what the, so $300 could be like $600, I mean, technically. Because you're always trying to catch up if you're trying to true it up, right?
Well, now, we might be a little bit off center here in what we're saying. The, this control number, comparing that to this other, this other schedule, that's, it's either been billed or it hasn't been billed. You know, if you're 30 days or ever how many days behind between when you use the water and when you bill it, then that, if it hasn't been billed, it doesn't enter the picture. This is just
Pure receivables against the payable.
So if it's been billed, it gets added to both, to both things. If it's been paid, it should be deducted from both things at the same time. So that should be, that should be current all the time.
Right.
Yeah.
So anything else anybody saw on this they need to go over before I leave that? Okay. If not, the last thing is your actual financial statements. And maybe also just to step back, I know somebody called over here last year, but I'm not sure if I number everybody. But to kind of remember who we are and who we're not, there's another CPA firm involved called Crawford Associates. And they come up, maybe throughout the year, I'm not sure, or maybe whenever there's a special need for them. But then they also will come up at year end and help you all get ready for the audit. And so a lot of that is just getting schedules that we need and schedules that we like. And it saves us time and moves us along. And also, it's required by the auditing standards that if you're going to have that, you have to have two different CPA firms doing that. And then the other part that they do is actually write this report. And then they give it to us. We review it. They give it to Kim. She reviews it. But we're separate CPA firms. It's not common ownership. We have, we do a similar type deal on, I don't know, 20 or 25 cities where we work with the Crawford's. But again, we're totally separate firms. But they've done this report. We've reviewed it. And I don't really want to get into it. I mean, it's a big report. We can spend a long time on it. I guess the only thing, maybe just to point out, if you flip the page, we're on like page 21, is to just look at your general fund. If you're there yet, that net change in fund balances, that's kind of governmental speak for net income, if you will. So you had about $245,000 positive impact to your general fund. So that's encouraging. The other thing, maybe to point out on page 26, your public works authority. If you go out maybe two-thirds of the way down the page, you see operating income of $11,000. So yeah, it's positive, but it's not positive by a lot. I mean, it's basically breaking even. Now, that's with a million, two of depreciation expense factored into that. So your cash flows are going okay because that depreciation is not a cash expense. You spent the cash years ago when you bought the equipment or infrastructure, whatever it is you need to provide those services. But it's breaking even, but it's not doing a whole lot more than that. And then if you look down, two numbers below that, you've got interest expense, which is a non-operating cost of $800,000, which actually knocks it below zero. So kind of looking at it that way. Yeah, it's cash flowing, but it's really not breaking even. Really beyond that, I don't have anything else to say unless you all have looked through this or have specific questions, or if you don't know where to find something, then we can go through it. But anything on this document? Maybe it's so confusing and that, that's part of the, part of the plan, just to confuse everybody that no one can ask any questions. I've given them enough pages.
This one we just got.
Oh, that's another, that's another
That's another reason you're safe.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, things that we need to talk about? We certainly enjoyed coming up here and working. I know in the past, we've worked with Wanda and worked with her. I think Wanda made it through the whole audit. And then right towards the end, or maybe after we were done being up here, then she retired. Now Kim's taken over. We've certainly worked with Kim before. And so we appreciate the business and like working with you all.
Anything specific that would be a negative impact to the city or the financials?
Nothing, nothing other than really what I've gone over that I could think of that would be significant to discuss. So I know apparently y'all just got the report, and it's kind of hard to make sense of it when you have one, and certainly on the fly. But certainly, if you have questions, you can get with me or get with Kim, and she can get with us.
At least the bottom line doesn't look like this.
Right, at least with no brackets where it's
Right.
All right. Well, guys, I think that's it.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. See you.
Okay.
We'll read it. We'll call you back. So.
We're very
Okay, number four.
And if I may, I've actually never been in a city that didn't have findings. Last year, I was surprised at the city of Guthrie's very, very efficient and transparent financials. And having, I believe, three findings last year, they were insignificant, considered immaterial. And this year with down to one is, I've been in cities where there were 23 type numbers. So it is, I know it seems like he did that fast. But when the auditor, he has no reason to not tell you if there was a problem. What's amazing is that it's clear, it's concise, it's efficient, it's effective. And that is the workings of Wanda in the past and the current workings of Kim. It's a, it's a great audit.
Good.
It really is.
It's amazing.
So you guys stick your finger on this one?
That was in 2012, ending in 2005. I believe that was in 2012. I'll look at that. Because they keep the old ones.
So that was corrected in the last one?
If it has a city response, if it has a city response.
This is that payroll deal?
Resolved in the current year.
Okay. So those are the previous year that were fixed this year.
And we'll work on that accounts receivables slide.
Anything else? Number four, the library annual update. Start your timer over there, would you?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay, mayor, city council members, thank you so much for having me. We'll talk about the library. So of course, you guys already know the library has been very busy over the past year. And I just wanted to hit on some of the highlights that we've, that we've been through. So the first thing is, and what you're looking at is the edge assessment. Basically, this is a very comprehensive, in-depth assessment that was developed by the American Library Association, the Urban Libraries Council, and a lot of state librarians. So Oklahoma was one of the few states last year that was chosen to be a pilot state. And then our library was one of the few libraries in the state chosen to actually take the survey and look at the results and just provide feedback. So as you can see, the surveys divided into three primary areas: community value, engaging the community, and organizational management. And as you can see on here, our totals are not at 100% in any of the categories. But that is, that's okay. The good news is that most of the items that this survey hit on, we were already looking at, whether informally, just between ourselves or between other community members, or formally in our five-year plan or our technology plan. So the great news about this survey is that it really highlights the potential of what Guthrie Public Library could be and what we can do for the community that we aren't already doing. So one of the, one of the big things that we're proud of is number five, our strategic partnerships. We've got pretty high marks there. Staff expertise, not to toot our own horns, but we're not too bad. Some, one thing that you'll notice on number seven, we did get a zero on that one. This survey's kind of interesting in that there's a yes option, there's a no option, and then there's a few gray areas. Like, we are, we plan on doing this within the next year, although we're not doing it currently. Any gray area is going to just come out as a zero. So a lot of items in number seven, we had been looking at, we just hadn't actually implemented them yet. So in the next year or so, all of these are going to go up. And we've really been looking at these hard, and which is why you've seen a lot more programming and just a lot more things coming out of the library. We've got our video teleconferencing unit, which y'all have heard about before. We partnered up with six other libraries in the state to offer health and wellness classes to our customers and their customers. We've done programs with financial literacy, looking at technology literacy, teaching people about our resources and how to use technology in general. Actually, we have one lady that comes in about once a month. And she uses our video teleconferencing unit to hook in with her workplace to attend continuing education classes. She's a registered nurse. And so they have a lot of requirements for continuing education. And she, she gets those, she fulfills those through the library. So we're excited to be able to provide that to her. And hopefully, the more people hear about it, the more people can come in and use that anytime they want. We have, we recently received a grant to buy a bunch of Legos, which is really neat because, as you know, Legos encourage kids to think spatially and develop some engineering skills. So that program is going really well. We had 22 kids last week, and we had 17 this week. So that's going strong. And we're trying to get out into the community a little bit more by doing the Trails and Tales program in the park. And that's been pretty successful also. We had 14, 14 kids last night. So, and they love it. They actually took turns reading each page out loud, which is a pretty big deal because it's, it takes some bravery to read in front of other people. So it was really neat to see the kids get together in a group like that and encourage each other and have fun at the same time. So other outreach things that we do, this past school year, we were able to visit with all the Guthrie schools, as well as all the Logan County schools at their open houses, to kind of talk with the parents and the students across the whole county about what the library has to offer, what we can do for them. We worked with one of the Guthrie High School teachers last fall on one of her, one of her projects. She wanted to do a themed unit on monsters and just kind of going into that realm. So we created this big book list for her. And then we actually, we did a special movie night for her class. And they received extra credit if they came to that. So that was really neat and very successful. We do, we try to hit all the local festivals. You've probably seen us at the Mait Guthrie Weird Block parties, handing out freebies and trying to get people signed up for library cards. We have a lot of community partnerships. We've worked with Logan County Health Department, a lot of the local businesses, whether they're sponsoring us in some way or providing expertise, like for our financial literacy classes. So we're really excited about that. Of course, we just did the summer reading program. And that was huge. And that was not just the library. That's, that really is a community effort and a community event. So really thrilled about that. We provide access to technology. Like I said, the video teleconference unit and just computers in general. There's, there's a lot of people, and it's, it's funny to think about that sometimes. But there are a lot of people that don't have access to computers, don't have access to internet in their homes. So we provide that, that outlet for them. Even applying for a job at Arby's or McDonald's, you need to apply online. Yeah, signing up for health cares, getting government information, it's all online now. A lot of government offices tell people, go to the library to get that information, tax forms, so much. So we're happy to provide that service for our customers. I feel like we do a lot. But we definitely want to do more. And we have, we really have room to grow. We want to implement a bookmobile service for the entire county, not just books, but also with a mobile hotspot and laptops. So those folks that don't have access to the internet, don't necessarily have to drive all the way into Guthrie, we'll bring it to them so they can take advantage of that, save a little time, save a little gas on their part, and still get those advantages. We want to upgrade our building to better accommodate the technology that we have and how we can grow. The, this, the network is basically piecemeal at this point. But we, if we can get the floors trenched, if we can get new outlets in, new internet drops, it would just be, it would really facilitate what we can do with our, with our computers. We want to get carpeting, not just for noise mitigation, but just for safety. Those tiles are slippery. I've seen people fall on them. We want to get a really nice signboard for out in the front of the library on the street, definitely within historic preservation code, and something that's very nice and classy. But I've talked to many other libraries that have something out on the street like that. And so they get so much business just from that, people driving by and seeing the programs that are offered that day. So just another way to reach out to our customers. We would love to provide more electronic resources in general. There are, there are databases where you can get access to any magazine that you want, just download it from online. There's video sign language classes that are online, which would be amazing to have. We would love to get a mobile app just to provide that seamless interaction with the library, going to our website, searching our catalog, even checking stuff out without having to come to a staff person. You could use your phone to scan the barcode, and it checks it out on your card, just like that. It's awesome. We would love to do that. More computers in general. You guys, you all have probably heard of Minecraft. There's a lot of other games out there. But doing, offering a LAN party for our teens, there's not, there's not a lot for our teens to do. And we want to provide more, we want to be that community center. So offering those, those cool events. But we need, we need the equipment to be able to do it. So we're thinking about that kind of stuff. Structural upgrades, a drive-through at the library would be incredible. We already offer, we have several customers that will call us and say, hey, I'm in the parking lot. Can you bring out our stuff? We're happy to do curbside. It would be even more convenient if we could have them pull right up to a window. And I understand that that building was made to accommodate a second story. If we could do that, we could expand the teen section, have a maker space for them. They could create their own videos, learn how to do, you know, DJing, music, all kinds of things. 3D printer, just really have a creative space where they can take advantage of that. And that would clear out room. We could have more spaces for, you know, just quiet reading areas, adult meeting spaces, anything. All of these things, we're excited about them. We really want to do them. But the catch is, of course, it, it costs a little bit of money. So I would just say, the sales tax election is coming up. And if it passes, it would be extremely beneficial to the city in general, and definitely to the library with what we can do and how we can provide better services for the community. So like I said, we see ourselves as a community center. And we love what we do. We want to do more. We want to empower Guthrie and make it the best that it can be. And I'm done.
Any questions for Cindy and Alber?
I appreciate all your hard work. You are kind of an innovator over there. And certainly, I'd like to add you up more. Appreciate it.
I like the ideas you come up with. Those are great ideas. Something we're going to look into.
It is my pleasure. It is definitely an honor to be here. I love Guthrie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Cindy.
Number five, discussion regarding agenda items. Any discussion on anything there?
Yes. We need to talk about the, this change order for the water meters.
Kim will take it.
I'll let Kim explain. The, originally, when we put the spit together, we went off of our, our files, all of our accounts. And which, when we set up a customer, we set up what type of meter we think it is. And so most of the meters that we listed are three quarters, five eighths, five eighths, something like that. Yeah. And so, so when we sent the spit out, that's what they based their numbers on, is what we thought we had in the ground. So after they get, you know, after they got here, we knew, well, we were short, number one, we knew we were going to be short because we didn't know where all of the meters were. Those are those vacant
Or non-existent meters.
Those are those vacant homes that, just not in our system.
Lots of them, nothing there.
Yeah. And so
Or houses.
So we knew that was a problem. We didn't know about the size until the, after the PMI got on the ground and they took inventory and realized that you have a lot of 1-inch meters. You don't have a lot of these, this other type of meter. And so there's, there's a difference in that cost. And a significant difference. Not only that, but the type of, I mean, there was some 4-inch meters, or something, the type of meters that we had to purchase, or we were going to have to tear out the entire pit and redo the entire pit. So these, that, that meter was like around $4,000. I mean, just for one.
Wow.
And so we had to buy several of those.
But in 30 years, when you do this again, we'll actually have accurate records. Some of these meters went in the ground 50, 60 years ago. And so you're pulling records from 1950. And of course, those records were not accurate. Now it's automated. We're lucky in the future.
And I'm sure at the time, however, they kept those records back then, did not know how important it was to make sure that you had the right size in the computer system. Now we know.
That was post-World War II, just like they had
Yeah.
But even those big meters, but were they, surely they weren't on houses residential? They were commercial somewhere that
Right.
We didn't, or they vacant?
No, no. Now, we knew that, we knew what size those meters, most of those. We knew the size of those. It was the, the meter pit itself was a problem.
So I'm really more interested in the accounting part of it. And because you're wanting to pull some money out of our rainy day fund. Is that correct?
The water line, OKC water line.
Which is not our rainy day fund?
No, no, no.
No.
That's that lawsuit.
Right.
1.9.
Hypnol use for water related
Yeah.
So the water line trust agreement is, we have money in there to pay
1.9 million.
Yeah. And we're using, we're using part of it right now for the bar screen project that was approved. It's currently being bid right now. And we're asking to use a portion of that to cover this.
Okay. So because what it says is, a contract was awarded the amount of the 1154, 915, leaving $45,000 in an original loan amount to cover the change order. But then you want to take $56,000. Where's that coming from to pay 45? I don't understand that.
The 45, because we originally borrowed 1.2 million. That was what we originally borrowed.
And that's there.
And then, but we're needing 101,000 to cover
The additional
The, what we're asking.
Okay, so you didn't use forty-five thousand, and so, that, so why is it that you need fifty-six thousand? That's why-
That's their, that's their hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars we had, that we needed that.
You had, you know, like, we had the original loan, right? But when the bids came in-
Oh, the hundred and twenty for the-
When the bids came in, it was forty thousand dollars cheaper than we thought.
Okay.
So what they're utilizing is you're going to utilize that forty-five thousand dollars to the original loan amount. The remaining balance is fifty-six thousand dollars.
So it's all been paid for except for the fifty-six then?
So the fifty-six will, the fifty-six will come out of the water, which is your-
Right, I see that.
Come out of the, the water fund.
Oh, so both of them are coming out?
No, just the fifty-six.
Just forty-five thousand is just going to fill the gap in the, on the original loan. The original loan came in under, the original bid came in under the loan amount.
Right, so you have money left over, so it's a credit.
Yeah, so what they're doing is they're going to go ahead and use the maximum of the loan, which is the forty-five thousand dollars.
Which will get us into one point two million. And then we're just going to take fifty-six thousand out of the water line fund to finish funding.
Finish funding.
All showing is just the, what is it, hundred and twen, hundred thousand?
Yeah, it's just a little over a hundred thousand.
All showing is just what, what that would cost extra. But we've already got forty-five thousand in the account, and so we're just going to take another fifty-six.
So the loan amount's going to be the one point two.
Right, right.
By the time you do all this, that one's changed.
And then you'll basically be funding the fifty-six out of the cash on hand that we have out of the one point nine million dollars in the, in the water.
So instead of borrowing a hundred and one thousand out of the account, we'll take fifty-six.
Right.
And, and it's good to be able to use that fund, because it's a super restrictive fund, so when you can use it, it's, it becomes a guarantee. I've noticed some of the pits, I've taken them out, I've been driving, I was out back on the mail rack on the back, I go, whoa, some of those boxes are huge. It's a lot of work.
So the real question is, have we seen better readings and we're receiving more income?
I sent, in a weekly update about a month ago, and there was one month with over a hundred percent increase, up to, I think, around a hundred and forty percent. So we anticipate what we thought was going to be a payoff and return on your investment in four to five years is looking more like three to four. So, your revenues pay back that one point two million. Once you pay back the one point two million, that's revenues without having to expend on the loan. So this will, in three years, you're welcome.
My water bill went up, I hope everybody appreciates it.
Mind it.
A single point.
I definitely did.
This one has a water mark.
Probably will eventually go up. Sorry, didn't say.
Anything else on the agenda items?
Are we really giving Damon a gun? Seriously? Are we really very smart?
Do you know which way to hold it? You know, hold it like this, right? You know, point back and-
And this is not even the original one you started with?
Oh, really? Oh, gosh.
This is a new one.
Well, how's this one? Your handgun. Yeah, it's, it's, it's almost had its expiration.
Which one are you going to take with you? The three-year-old one?
This has the grease cleaned out of it too, right? Okay, just checking. Don't be pointing back and tell us what charge.
Okay, number six. Request for future items of discussion? If anybody got anything? Number seven, we're charged.